The meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Apache Junction. Today's date is April eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is seven P. M. Will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I. Let the United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burke.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the agenda as presented and approve the minutes for March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Rudy, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Callen.
Yes.
Chairman Hanchy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Starr.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigelow.
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Land.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to take roll also?
(laughing).
Take roll?
We forgot to do the roll call.
We have a roll call.
That's what I asked for, a roll. Oh.
It's been awhile.
I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Well, no, we were doing the second.
Cause we're all here.
Well, we have to do the motion first. I got the roll call second after. Oh, I did skip it.
Yeah.
Rudy, can we get a roll call as well?
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Hanchy.
Here.
Vice Chair Barker.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Commissioner Starr.
Here.
Commissioner Bigelow.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Land.
Here.
Commissioner Callen.
Yep.
All present, we have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rudy. All right, tonight, there are two public hearings this evening, consideration of conditional use permit case number P dash two-five dash six dash CUP for the approval of the operation of a high-end smoke shop. Do you?
Good evening, Commissioner Members. My name is Thane Tanago. I'm a planner and staff with the city. Tonight, I will be presenting the case P dash twenty-five dash six dash CUP, request by Noah Mowell Mason for a conditional use permit for Suaro Smoke Shop. So this is area map of the project location. The project site is known to the city as Pakui Plaza, and the site has historically been known as city center, B-three zone, and now the applicant is requesting approval for a conditional use permit to operate a smoke shop in the units eight and nine of Pakui Plaza. And there is no deviation being requested with this CUP. And here's the zoning map of the project site. To the north, east, and the west, it has city center, B-three zones, and then to the southeast, general commercial, B-one and B-one PD. And this is proposed site plan for the project site. Since the project site is already a developed property, there won't be any major improvements involved. However, the applicant will, the applicant will be required to restripe the parking spaces in front of the units eight and nine, and there will also be some interior minor improvements. In terms of public input, sign was posted at the site, notices were sent out to property owners within three hundred feet around the subject site, and proposed project was advertised in the newspaper. Neighborhood meeting was also held on March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Only one person showed up, and the attendee was supportive. And staff also received one phone call asking if the smoke shop will sell marijuana, and staff confirmed that it will not. So with that, staff recommends approval of case P dash twenty-five dash C dash CUP, twenty-five dash CUP, subject to the conditions approval found in the staff report. And I have prepared recommended motion for you as well, if you would like to use, and the applicant is here with their own presentation, and after that, if you have any questions, we are happy to answer. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for her at this time? All right. Can't want to step up now?
Hello, guys. Gonna have to raise the sub-icing go.
Please state your name and address.
State, name and address?
Name and address.
All right. Noah, like personal address?
Or business.
Okay, cause it's a Hundred West Apache Trail. I do live on Tomahawk Road on Twenty-first Ave, though. So hello, everybody. My name is Noah Mason. My business partner is Tony Valenzuela. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize two incredible individuals who's helped me through this process, and that is Thane and Erica. I wouldn't be here without them. They have helped me this entire way and through the CUP process, and I am so appreciative of them. I'd also like to extend that sincere thank you guy, thank you to you guys as well for being here today. I, it's, it's a dream to be able to open up a smoke shop in a place that I've called home for the past five years, and to give this, get this opportunity feels like a dream. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. Um, let's start it off. All right, at Suaro, we are on a journey, a very big journey, to eliminate the stigma and the bad mindset that you get when you hear the word "smoke shop." We are set out to set a new standard for what the smoke shop industry can be and should be. We will be located in a Hundred West Apache Trails, a Hundred, uh, there you go, and then our mission is strong, but it's simple. To redefine the smoke shop industry by focusing on quality, education, and community engagement, while always promoting, promoting responsible adult use to all of our customers.
Next slide.
Project description. High-end. That is a key word. Suaro is a high-end smoke shop, but that doesn't mean expensive products. It represents a customer experience, one that feels genuine, respectful, and professional. When it comes to our product, our inventoryly, our inventory will include top-tier brands. That means American-made brands. That means glass made by Arizona Glassblowers, being able to represent their glass and have it on ourselves. That's an awesome feeling for them and us. Ooh, I'm a little shaky up there. Excuse me. I'll say it, and I'll say it over and over, we're not your typical smoke shop. A lot of people hear "smoke shop," and they imagine a cluttered counter, maybe dim lighting, or an atmosphere that's, lacks the warmth and approachability. We're the exact opposite.
Kiss the mic a little there.
Our, our brand is built on community values, respect, cleanliness, and professionalism. At Suaro, we are committed to supporting and contributing to the local events, not as a marketing tactic, not as a way to get our name out there, but a genuine expression of our appreciation and gratitude for being in Apache Junction. The products we will be offering, high-end glass made by Arizona Glass, obviously, we can't, I wish there was a whole bunch of Arizona Glassblowers that we can carry, but we also carry a variety of herbal vaporizers, a strong CBD selection for wellness and relaxation, cigars, nicotine products, and vaping hardware that meet all current regulations. Thane said it the best. We don't sell marijuana. We don't plan on selling marijuana at all. We are not a dispensary. We will not sell nor carry any marijuana on the premise. Every product that will be in our inventory will be a hundred percent legal. No ifs, ands, or buts. There's no gray area to work in. There's only a legal one, and that's the one we will be in. Business operations. We want to be clear, crystal clear about how we operate. First, this is not a lounge. We are a retail-only establishment. We won't have any areas for customers to hang out or try, or try product. We love, we love customers, and we love the, the quick hellos that we get from them, but we don't need people laying, laying or staying around in our store. Second, no smoking. I know that sounds crazy. We're a smoke shop, but no smoking will be allowed on or near the premise. There will be signs reminding of, signs reminding customers of this law. We will ensure to maintain a clean, odor-free, and welcoming storefront. Finally, we will ensure no annoy, uh, no loitering policy. No one likes when anybody's hanging outside of their business, and no one feels comfortable going into a business when someone's surrounding it. So no loitering, please. In conclusion, thank you for your oper, thank you for this opportunity. And Suaro Smoke Shop is more than just a retail space. It's a new standard for what we believe a smoke shop should be and can be. Rooted in quality, community, and responsible business practices, we aim to create a welcoming environment that reflects the values of Apache Junction. With premium products and a modern environment, we are excited to become a positive addition to the downtown landscape. Thank you for considering Suaro Smoke Shop as a part of the future of this vibrant community. Thank you, guys.
Any questions? Do you want to make a question?
I love your energy.
Thank you so much for being nervous.
It's not your first time. You have a question, Dan.
I have a question. Now, um, are you going to be encouraging people to participate in smoking sensation programs?
Um, no, I actually got that question when I was sitting outside. Uh, if you smoke, come on in, but we're not going to have signs that promote smoking. Um, we are, we, we do know it's a problem, but it's not something we want to get people hooked on, if you know what I mean. Is that, was, is that the question?
That's part of the question.
Okay.
But, but are you gonna also put proper signage in there to warn people of the dangers of smoking?
Um, we definitely can. I'm not a, I'm not a, a, against that. Like I said, smoking's bad, and if people choose to come and smoke, come on in, we'll have the products that you carry. But yeah, we, we, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with carrying or showing signage that shows the repercussions of smoking.
Uh, would you, uh, what happens if you have a pregnant woman come in and try to purchase?
Um, that one's a little difficult because a pregnant woman could, could be buying for her husband, and I'm never gonna try to judge somebody. That's not some, that's not, we're not a smoke shop where you come in and we're gonna judge you. Um, a couple of questionings, you know, if we can ask a couple of questions to understand the situation more without being disrespectful, I would definitely like to do that. So if a pregnant lady comes in, "Hey, I want some cigarettes." "Heck, yeah, are these there for you today?" "Well, they are." "Well, this makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable, but I would like to decline this sale today." If that sounds good, I'm okay.
How are you gonna handle straw buyers, strip miners?
That's when the no loitering comes in. We've, I, so I work at a smoke shop, I've worked at a smoke shop for eight years under this man right here. We've had it. People don't like buying for ma, miners. The minute you, you get somebody outside hanging around, a customer will tell you, "Hey, you got someone out there." It's a quick thirty-second, "Please get out. Please do not come back. You're an adult-only establishment. This is not for you." It's okay to get a little, raise your voice a little bit, just to show them and tell them, like, "This is not something we want to promote to kids. This is not us." High-end smoke shop does not equal selling to kids.
I have to disclose one thing, that I am a health scientist doctor, and smoking is actually, by the surgeon general and by popular knowledge, a harmful health product. Okay? Um, personally, I've seen the, the hazards of smoking. My father died of cancer of smoking. Uh, he had a total laryc, laryngectomy, spoke through his threat throat, throat for the last couple of years of his life, and then finally, at the age of sixty-two, he lost his life to lung cancer.
I'm sorry about your loss, sir, but I know that every case is gonna be treated differently, and, um, health is number one, um, but it's not, I, it's not me, uh, it's not my job as one to make decisions for people, so if they are willing to welcome in coming in, I'm always down to adhere to telling people that smoking is not good. Um, as a, as a, as a health scientist, you know, it, like you said, you have firsthand, um, but I don't think it's, um, my job as a smoke shop owner to deny people, um, something that gives them a little bit relaxation of, a little bit of relaxation in this hectic world. Um, I know there's always different ways to do these, to relax, but some people choose cigarettes, some people choose vaping, um, but I believe that it's on them to make those decisions.
Isn't the paraphernalia also used for illegal drug use as well, with what you're selling?
That's what I like, I have you put, I have you brought that. No, so our glassware is for cannabis use only. Um, I think what you're thinking of is something like a little ball that you might find laying around sometimes called a crack pipe? No, we do not sell that. We are here to adhere to the community values of what Apache Junction is. That doesn't mean degrading the community, it means upholding it. That's what I mean by knowledgeable, and we want to be knowledgeable about all of our products. We're clear as day with them. Um, to answer your question, no, none of our products in our store will be a, will be, will be and/or can be used for illegal drug use.
Any else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If anybody from the public would like to speak, please come up, state your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes. It's now open, if anybody would like to come up and make a comment. Come on up, serious.
I'm Gordy Harder from Austin, Minnesota, the home of Hormel, meat products. You know, the meat you love to eat. Uh, I would like to address this concern about smoking. I just looked it up, I didn't know it was gonna be on the agenda as such, but I felt compelled to come and talk, so please bear with. The Center for Disease Control says that four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand people die each year from smoking. That's a lot of people. You figure out how many cities that would include. The next question I have, where I found... Do you know how much smoking costs the United States in twenty eighteen? You gotta guess, got something in your mind? Put it in there. Six-hundred billion dollars. You've got a perfect chance to put this aside. We work hard as Americans for our hospital and the research, and then spend this kind of money and lose four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand people? And what about our youngsters at home? If the old man or the young man, or anyone else smokes at home, you can't help but get that smoke. And I haven't had time to go look at the statistics, but can you imagine how many young It's just, I don't know. You have a perfect chance to squelch this. I have nothing against the young man at all, but I do have something against those of us that can prevent this kind of disaster in our communities, and we don't take the opportunity to do what we need to do. Do you have any questions of me?
We're not allowed to ask any questions.
You're not allowed? We got a land of the free.
Not during this process.
And the home of the brave. I'm not very brave anymore, but I want to thank you then for the opportunity that you gave me to come forward and talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else, just come on up. Again, state your name, address.
My name is Mara Summers. I live at four-hundred North Plaza Drive. I live here year-round. I've lived here since twenty thirteen. I would like to preface it with saying that I personally also have a father who died from complications of smoking. I've never smoked in my life. I agree that it's a very expensive and perhaps unhealthful habit, but as prohibition proved, you cannot legislate people's behaviors. Education is a good way, but legislation doesn't usually work. This is a smoke shop. If you refuse him, are you going to refuse fries from selling cigarettes? Is this any different from a liquor store? As far as drug paraphernalia that might be there? Uh, the, the feed store sells syringes that can be used for heroin and various things. The, the dollar store sells teaspoons which are used in heroin, you know? How much control do we really have? I don't think that these, this retailer should be denied simply because he's selling something that other people are selling, and he's simply being targeted. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Going once, going twice, third and final call. I now close the public's, the public session. Uh, yeah, you wanna do the fact-finding? I did it last. I had to do it all.
Oh, cause I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
Nobody else was prepared.
Okay, so, uh, this is a finding of facts. First, adequacy of roadways off-street parking, public facilities, and services to accommodate this proposed use. Do we see that as?
It's not a problem, it's already set up for retail.
Okay. Number two, does this have negative impacts arising from the emission of odor, dust, gas, noise, lighting, vibration, smoke, heat, or glare?
I do not see any.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay.
We're good.
Okay, three, does this contribute to the deterioration of the neighborhood, or have a negative impact on the neighborhood's property values?
The property's been vacant for a long, long time. I think it'll have the opposite effect, it'll increase.
Okay. Next, is this compatible with surrounding uses and structures?
Yes, it's gonna fill a empty spot in the structure already there.
Okay. Does this conform with the general plan and city policies?
Yes, it's in our retail area that we want to develop.
Vice Chair, is your speak, is your microphone on?
Yes, sir. I just wasn't, I wasn't eating my mind. I need, I need to get closer.
That's good, that's perfect.
Thank you. Okay, we went through the con, uh, conformance with the general plan and city policies, yes?
Yes.
Um, screening and buffering of uses, is it properly screened, buffered, et cetera?
Yes, it's already an existing retail spot.
Right. Uh, unique nature of the property use or the development's physical characteristics? Not really.
No, there's no unique.
Nothing at all unique about it. It is what it is. All right, so we have found that all the findings are agreeable.
Yep. Anybody like to say anything before we do a motion, or?
I'd like to make a comment.
Commissioner Barker.
I, I think that one of our folks that came up and spoke hit the nail on the head. You can't legislate people's, you can't legislate people's, um, habits or people, what people are going to do about that, because as she brought up, we have stores all over town that smell, that sell the same products, basically, so, you know, we can't legislate that. And I just wanted to say I agree with her, and I appreciate her coming up and speaking.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't see the need for another smoke shop. I don't know if you realize, but from the east side of Meridian to Thunderbird, that's one point. 1.4 miles, there's already six smoke shops. That's just my two cents.
Fair. Anybody else? All right. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
You got it?
Yeah. Go for it, Jesse.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit case P-25-6-CUP. A request by Noah Morrell Mason of Seguaro Smoke Shop for the operation of a high-end smoke shop located at units eight and nine of 100 West Apache Trail, subject to the following conditions of approval, of which they are five.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. We don't have to list all seven, it's just that we're noting that there's seven conditions that will apply.
Second.
Rudy, I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Callen.
Yes.
Chairman Hanshee.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Starr.
No.
Commissioner Bigelow.
No.
Commissioner Mikelund.
Yes.
Five in favor to opposed, the CUP is approved, Mr. Chairman. Any aggrieved individual could appeal this case to counsel within 20 days in writing and for subject to a filing fee.
Thank you, Rudy. All right, the next one, we have consideration of conditional use permit case P-24-104-CUP for the approval of a 336-unit, three-story residential rental community. Kelsey, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kelsey Shatnick, I'm a planner on staff, and tonight I will be presenting a conditional use permit request by the Wolf Company to permit a multifamily development in the city center or B3 zoning district. So the subject site is located generally west of the northwest corner of Idaho Road and North Apache Trail, between Apache Trail and Plaza Drive. The site is approximately 18 acres in size and is currently vacant, and the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to permit a 336-unit, three-story multifamily residential rental development. So again, the property is zoned city center or B3. In terms of surrounding zoning, to the north, to the south, and to the east, you have properties that are also zoned B3, and then to the west, you have the Lost Dutchman RV Resort. In terms of the general plan land use designation, the subject site, as well as all of the surrounding parcels, are designated downtown mixed-use. So the proposed multifamily use is consistent with the existing general plan land use designation, which encourages a mix of retail, office, as well as multifamily uses. So here is the site and landscape plan for the property. The applicant is proposing 14 three-story buildings with a total of 336 units. Amenities for the project will include a clubhouse, a pool, dog park, usable open space, grills, as well as covered parking. The site will be developed with native low-water usage plantings, and all lighting will be dark-skY compliant. There will also be two access points for the property. The main access will be off of Apache Trail, and the secondary access will be off of Plaza Drive for residents only. This will include a right-out, so right onto Plaza, and then a left into the project. And one thing I wanted to note was that the applicant heard concerns regarding the location of this driveway entrance, so the applicant has actually proposed to relocate it further north on the property in order to encourage residents to turn out, travel north on Plaza to reach Superstition Boulevard. Here are the proposed elevations for the sites. Units will consist of one and two bedrooms and range in size from 750 square feet to just over 1,000 square feet. As you can see, the applicant is providing three building types, each with their own unique architectural details. A few that I wanted to point out, on building type two, you'll see in the center there are usable balconies, and this is on both the front and the rear elevation. And then building type three, there is additional siding being provided on the base of the building. You will also notice that for all of the building types, that the ground floor units all have their own screened-in patio area. And one thing I wanted to highlight is that these elevations have actually gone through multiple revisions before getting to this point that you see in front of you tonight, and staff appreciates all the changes that the applicant has made to get to this point, and thanks them for working so closely with staff. In terms of public input, two signs were posted at the site, notices were sent out to property owners within 300 feet, and the case was advertised in the newspaper. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on December 9th, 2024. Four individuals attended this meeting. Two were local business owners who were supportive of the project, and two were representatives of the Lost Dutchman RV Resort who noted concerns regarding the building height, traffic, as well as future residents and children potentially living in this area. Staff also spoke with five individuals regarding the project. Primary concerns and questions heard were regarding the off-site parking along Plaza Drive, the building height, and blocked views of the superstitions, as well as increased traffic along Plaza Drive. One aspect of the CUP application that I wanted to point out is that the applicant is requesting a parking reduction as part of their request. Per the city code, this specific site is required to provide a total of 749 onsite parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing to provide a total of 684 onsite spaces. So this is essentially equivalent to an 8.7% reduction in onsite parking.
One question. Does that take into account the parking that's going to be on Plaza?
It does not. So onsite parking has to be completely onsite, so it does not count, off-site parking does not count towards their overall required parking.
And how many approximate spots will be on Plaza?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
So per city code, the applicant can administer, or staff can administratively approve up to a 10% parking reduction if the project meets two requirements, which this project is meeting both. The first is that the applicant must provide technical evidence that the proposed use generates a parking demand that is at least 10% less than the required parking standard. The applicant has provided a parking analysis demonstrating a demand less than the required standard. And then number two, the applicant must demonstrate that a portion of the required parking can be accommodated with existing public parking that is available within 100 feet of the subject site. And again, the applicant is providing 45 off-site parking stalls within 100 feet of the project along Plaza Drive. Due to the evidence provided, staff is supportive of the requested reduction in parking. Since this reduction of 10% can be administratively approved, staff will issue a separate approval letter for the reduction if and when the proposed project is approved. In addition to the decrease in parking, planning staff supports the proposed multifamily use at this site for the following reasons. It aligns with the city center general plan designation, meeting general plan goal 9.2, plan for an appropriate geographic mix of residential, commercial, and recreational uses in the downtown. Number two, it contributes to the diversification of housing types within both the city as well as the downtown, meeting goal 4.8, provide a variety of housing options. And number three, it increases density within the downtown, which will help support existing and future retail developments, meeting goal 9.3, encourage infill development. So with that, staff recommends approval of case P-24-104-CUP, subject to the full list of conditions within the staff report. That concludes my presentation for this evening. At this time, I will invite the applicant up who has a presentation for you tonight, and both staff and the applicant will be available for questions.
Thank you, Kelsey.
What question, though?
Absolutely.
This is currently commercial, correct?
So it's currently mixed-use, yes. So that's why it only requires a conditional use permit as opposed to a rezoning since the use aligns with that mixed-use designation.
And then, what is it zoned for currently for maximum number of stories?
Maximum stories? So a, so 60-feet height is allowed in the B3, and this project is at 37 feet 5 inches.
So they could almost go to a six-story building, at least a five?
Give or take, depending on the design, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your names and address.
Thank you. Sorry, my leg went to sleep. My name is Paul Gilbert. I'm an attorney, but a nice guy. And I'm here representing the Wolf Company tonight. I'd like to preface my comments at the outset by saying, my claim to fame is that I've been doing this as long as Rudy. So, good to see you again.
You too.
My, again, name is Paul Gilbert. My address is 701 North 44th Street in Phoenix. So I'm here on behalf of the Wolf Company, who is under contract to purchase the property. We openly state we don't own the property, we have it in escrow, subject to getting entitled here at Apache Junction. Our clients are here, the three representatives, I'm going to ask them to stand so you can see they're also nice guys, or girls. We have, beginning on the far side, Derek Clayton, Chase Cruchain, and Katie Reiner. You can sit down now. I'd like to, I think it's fair for you, and not only fair, but important for you to know a little bit about the company. The Wolf Company is a very sagacious and experienced developer of multifamily product. They're a third-generation family home business. They were founded in 1949, and they're headquartered in Scottsdale. So they're a local company and have deep roots here. Their specialty is high-quality multifamily residential communities. They own and manage over 10,000 multifamily units, mostly here in the valley. So you're dealing with some people that are very experienced and know what they're doing. They also have another 4,000 units in various stages of development. I think, as we reason together this evening, a very important factor I want you to understand about them is that, and I represent a lot of developers, is that they don't build to sell, they build to keep and to own. So most of the product that they have built here in the valley, they continue to own, and that will be the case for this project that we're talking about this evening. And I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce, I brought my own Van La White here to help me. Andy Jokums is a planner in my office, and he'll be, I can't chew gum and walk at the same time, so he has to run the slides for me. All right, on the screen is an aerial photograph of the downtown area with the subject property highlighted. Kelsey went over much of my presentation, so I'll try not to bore you and skip over what she brought up, but there are some things that I think need a little more emphasis. The property is zoned B3. I can't emphasize enough that it's in the core downtown overlay district. So B3 allows multifamily as a matter of right, so it's an allowed use. B3 allows three basic uses: retail, office, and multifamily. So we are an allowed use. However, multifamily in the B3 zone does require a conditional use permit, and that is the process we are here before you this evening. The general plan designation, as Kelsey pointed out, is downtown mixed-use, and as staff notes in their report, and I quote, "The proposed multifamily development complies with the general plan designation and does not require a general plan amendment." You will hear me say perhaps ad nauseam in the course of the presentation this evening, we comply with your general plan. That's very important. In fact, as we develop this presentation, I'm going to point out, we comply with every single one of your plans. So there's no plan that you have that we don't comply with. And I think that's terribly important as we reason together on this project. We wanted to list some of the development benefits of this project, I'll do it very quickly. This is an $80 million project. So it's a project that behooves us to pay a lot of attention to, and we have done that. As I mentioned, we don't need rezoning, we just need the conditional use permit. We will be providing $3.7 million in public infrastructure as part of this program, both in improvements to the surrounding roads and also public or impact fees. And this doesn't even include the future spending of the people that will live in this apartment complex. 336 units brings an immense spending power to Apache Junction, and as we will discuss in just a moment, it's strategically located where that spending power is very important, given its juxtaposition to your downtown development plan, something I'll develop in a little more detail further on. In fact, every scenario of the downtown master plan update identifies this property as future residential. Even though the three uses are allowed, retail and office, every single plan, including your downtown master plan, designates this property as residential. So we cannot emphasize enough and underscore, we're right there with your general plan, your downtown plan, virtually every plan that has addressed the location of this property. I'd like to go over the site plan with you just very quickly. Kelsey covered most of this, 336 units. We have 14 three-story buildings, 48 one-bedroom of 760 square feet, and 288 two-bedroom units of 1,012 to 1,040 square feet. I might jump on an observation in your staff report. Your staff report made the comment that I want to emphasize, and that is the size of these apartments are very generous. I want to also emphasize, these are market-rate apartments, these are not government-subsidized, purely market-rate apartments, and they're not age-restricted. There will be a single-story clubhouse, and as Kelsey said, we will have a pool, a dog park, fitness center, barbecues, covered parking, and all the amenities you would typically expect to see in a quality multifamily project of this nature. There are two points of access, Kelsey went over those with you, so I won't go to them in much detail. The main access, and it isn't really a main access, but it's our primary entrance, will be off of Apache Trail, and then the other is on the other side, and it will be with Plaza Drive as our secondary access. Here's a rendering of our clubhouse, which is, again, a high quality, it's visible from Apache Trail, and I'm glad that reference was made by Kelsey about working with the staff. I'm going to talk about this again some more in the future, but we made a prodigious amount of changes to this site plan, to the elevation, and a whole bunch of other things. Clubhouse was one of them, and we really improved it. The next is the Type 1 rendering, this is our Type 1 building. Next is our Type 2 building, I'm going to go through this very quickly, and the next slide is our Type 3 rendering. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about parking, Kelsey covered it somewhat, I'd like to go into a little more detail if I might. As noted in the staff report, as part of the design review application, we have requested a parking standard modification. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator may allow up to a may allow up to a 10% reduction of the required number of parking spaces. If, and you have to meet both of these conditions, one, you have to submit a parking study that empirically demonstrates that parking still works. We have done that. Secondly, you have to, or a portion of the required parking can be accommodated with public parking available within 100 feet. We are providing 45 additional parking spaces on Plaza Drive. We meet that requirement. So we've met the basic two requirements that are outlined in your ordinance. There's one major change. We're not asking for the full 10%. We're asking for 8.7%, which amounts to about 65 spaces. Currently, Plaza Drive has 44 on-street parking. We will be adding, as noted, an additional 45. The staff report indicates that they support this request. We're very grateful for that support. And if you approve the CUP, they then will go ahead and approve the parking reduction. So a predicate for the parking reduction, of course, then means we've got to win the conditional use permit as well. Since we are aware of the fact that parking has been a concern, we're very aware of that, and we've thought through this issue very carefully and want to share with you in a little more detail the justification that we have for this parking waiver juxtaposed against an ordinance that you recently formulated. And we understand the planning commission was very much of the mover and shaker in bringing that increased parking to fruition. So let's talk about it in a little more detail. The recent text amendment was specifically written to add guest parking to the multifamily product as an additional one space for .3 units. This guest parking ratio is more important, though, and related on smaller projects where the parking space count is low with not very many extra opportunities for guests. An example of that, let's assume there's a 10-unit multifamily complex. The guest parking requirement adds three spaces. For 336 units, which we are proposing on the other hand, the ratio translates to 101 required parking spaces for guests. We submit that there will never be a time when this complex will have 101 guests at any one time. So when you have a larger facility and project, as we're proposing, you have a lot more opportunity to provide guest parking, and it isn't as crucial as the case with a smaller complex and proposal. We, although, also want you to know that we're providing 2.4 spaces per unit. So every unit, we're providing 2.4 spaces. Of the 3,000 units that Wolf has built in the last five years, the Wolf Company portfolio, the average parking ratio is 1.67 per unit. We're providing more parking in this project because of the uniqueness of Apache Junction than we've provided, on average, of any of our other multifamily projects. So we are going the extra mile and providing then the 2.4 spaces per unit. We are also requiring, providing the required 1.5 spaces per one-bedroom and the two spaces per bedroom, and then an additional 36 parking spaces. When the off-site parking, we are providing along Plaza Drive, is factored in, then we have 81 extra spaces for guests, which we feel will alleviate any concerns about guest parking, thus underscoring the reason why your staff feels comfortable in supporting this parking reduction that we are requesting. In furtherance, to alleviate concerns of the onsite parking spaces, only one space will be reserved for each dwelling unit, leaving 338 spaces, plus the spaces on Plaza Drive for guests and other residential parking. The bottom line, cutting through all those statistics, is we are providing plenty of parking, based on our experience, based on statistical, based on ITE standards. We're providing more than enough parking with, even with this parking waiver. I suspect we may hear from some of the neighbors about density and height. Any rezoning case, or really a conditional use permit, just a form of rezoning, needs to address density and height. I wish to quickly do that. Permissible by the city code in the B3 zoning allows up to 40 dwelling units per acre. That's what B3 allows. What are we asking? We're asking for 18 units per acre. So we're way, way under. In fact, we're at 55% reduction over the density that is permitted in the B3 zoning category. Let's talk about height just for a moment. The B3 zoning allows, and Mr. Chairman, you asked this question. Pardon my being a little redundant here.
That's fine.
But it's such a good point, I want to make it again. We are seeking a three-story building that will be 34 feet, 6 inches high. The ordinance in B3 allows us to go 60 feet. So we are way below what we could otherwise do in this ordinance. That basically is a 37% reduction in height from what is permissible. Now, for context purposes, let's talk about density. We are adjacent to, and many people that are here this evening, I believe, live in the Lost Dutchman RV Resort. They have 733 spaces on approximately 41 and 1/2 acres. That translates into a density of the project right exactly next to us of 17.67 units per acre. We are at 18. So the density that we're proposing for this project is compatible with and related to the density of the largest project right immediately next to us. Again, let's talk about height real quickly. The Horizon Health Building is also three stories in height, and it has an overall height of between 45 and 43 feet. They're right next to us. So do we fit in? Yes. One of the standards that you need to find on your seven findings is, are we compatible with adjacent property? Clearly, both on height and density, we qualify. The... Let's see, we're on to traffic now? Good. Thank you, Andy. As part of this request, we were required to submit a traffic analysis. That traffic analysis was reviewed and approved by your staff. Here's the conclusion of our traffic engineer. "The studied intersections operate at an acceptable level of service with existing conditions." And, and here's the important part, please focus on this, "with trips from the neighborhood, with trips from the proposed development, will continue to operate at acceptable levels of service." Both in the Horizon years, in other words, both from the time it opens, and then factoring in a 5% increase for the year 2026 and 2031, also it operates as an acceptable level. So that's the conclusion of our traffic report, again, which was reviewed by your staff. The traffic analysis, a further salient point I want to share with you, says that all adjacent intersections will not decrease in the level of service. So even with this project, we are not affecting the level of service. It won't decrease. We're at the same function. So this conclusion then was also approved by your city staff. Now, no question, putting 336 units is going to increase traffic in the area, of course, goes without saying. But we wanted to compare, and this is really important because it's very well portrayed on this slide that is before you now. We wanted to compare the anticipated vehicular trips created by our proposed project juxtaposed with the retail or office, both of which could be built on this property. Now, I want to divert just for a moment and talk about your B3 ordinance. B3 allows, as I indicated earlier, three uses: retail, office, and multifamily. Only one of those uses requires a conditional use permit, multifamily, the reason we're here. But that means that there is no conditional permit required for retail and no conditional permit required for office buildings. So retail could go there without having to have a public hearing. It's allowed as a matter of right. They could have all the traffic they wanted. They could have all the height they wanted, up to 60 feet. No public hearing, no public input, no recommendation or input from the planning commission. Only one use gives the planning commission the right to weigh in on the issues we're talking about, and that's multifamily with the conditional use permit process. So basically, our use, pardon my lack of modesty here, but our use is the lowest traffic generation of all of the three uses that are permitted. We are 85% decreased below what a shopping center would produce in traffic, and we are 45% decreased below what an office building would produce. So I think the statistics here are very compelling in that this use is a good use. And if traffic is your concern, then you should be supporting this conditional use permit. We are the lowest generator of any of the three permitted uses. I'd like to talk a little bit about Idaho Road. Idaho Road is just to the east of our site, and I'd like you to focus on that graph that we've got up there before you. We recognize that one of the concerns that we've heard about is our access driveway directly onto Apache Trail. Let's, as we focus on this project, focus just on that. Downtowns have an inherent congestion. You don't have a downtown that isn't congested. That's the case everywhere in the Valley. That's a principle of existing downtowns. They're all congested. So you're going to be dealing with congestion in your downtown. So that's a fact that Apache Junction cannot escape. But as the downtown emerged with greater intensity of residential and commercial, then you will always have some congestion in your downtown. One thing we wanted to point out with our property, however, and this is a very important point, is our proximity and the relief it provides due to our adjacency to Idaho. We don't directly access Idaho Road, but we are only a few hundred feet away from this major north-south road. Now, as this graph points out, that provides a major outlet for our traffic. And let me go through it in detail. If a resident doesn't want to drive south down Apache Trail through the 15 mile-per-hour section downtown, or is headed south to the Frye Shopping Center or further south to the US 60, they can make, coming out of our site, a left turn out of our project and almost immediately make the sweeping right-hand turn onto Idaho Road to head south, as shown on the red line. So we've got access to Idaho Road, and it's very convenient, very accessible, and relieves a lot of the traffic that otherwise might take place upon Apache Trail. So let's go further. If they wanted to head north from our project to something like the Multi-Generational Center on Prospector or Prospector Park, that also is just a short movement on Apache Trail, as shown in the orange. So entering the property from Idaho Road, as noted with the blue line, is also an easy bypass downtown and a likely travel path of our residents unless they are directly coming home from the retail and services located on Apache Trail. So the bottom line is, we've got an ability to handle traffic that is unique because of our proximity to Idaho, and that's a very, very logical way for our people to travel. All right, let's talk to, we want to change the site plan that we submitted. We're proposing that we move the driveway location on Plaza Drive further to the north. Our Plaza Drive access is currently located opposite the access for the Lost Dutchman RV Resort. However, the logical thinking was that by moving the driveway to the north, that would encourage more residents to use this entrance and exit with convenient access to Superstition Boulevard to the north. So that is an amendment to the proposal that we have filed. We took the time to review that with the staff, and I can tell you that the staff would support that change in our plan. Makes a lot of sense. I'd like to talk a little bit about project changes. Sorry I'm going on so long here. You'll have to forgive me. In my profession, I'm paid by the word. So some of this is...
You're a rich man.
Going on. Touche, touche. Fair point. All right. As we postulated with the city staff, we received a lot of comments and feedback. I want to preface this comment by saying, we have made a lot of changes. I'm not going to regale you with all of them. We've listed part of them here. But we have worked closely, and I underline closely, with your staff for more than a year. And that has been a real pleasure. We're happy to work with your staff, and we feel that some good things have come from that cooperation and working together. And I can honestly say that our project is improved over where we first started because of the input from your staff. And again, these changes are many, many fold. I'll just take, quickly, talk about two of them. We've added more balconies. We've also added patios, screening, or patios were always there, but we've added screening walls to every patio. So again, thank you to the staff. We mean that. There's no reason to, we already have your support, so I'm not buttering you up by thanking you for your input, but it was very much appreciated and helpful. So thank you. All right. Quickly, let's talk about outreach. We had one neighborhood meeting. There were four attendees, as Kelsey pointed out. There were four attendees, as Kelsey pointed out to you at the neighborhood meeting, and two attendees were the adjacent business owners. They were very much in support. Two representatives from the Dutchman RV Resort were there. They had concerns with height, traffic, and children. So let me just comment on that quickly. Obviously, the Superstition Mountains are beautiful, and we appreciate the concerns we heard about the height. But we're proposing a height that is lower than what we're allowed under the ordinance to begin with. Secondly, views will still be blocked no matter who gets developed or what gets developed on this property. As you can see from the three pictures at the bottom of the slide there, that the existing Horizon Health Building is at three stories, blocks views, but so does some of the existing native vegetation, as well as the existing one-story building along Plaza Drive. So even if we were building single-family homes here, the views would be restricted. Just quickly, I'll cover this very fast. This isn't a speculative project. We want to locate in Apache Junction. That's underscored by the fact we've worked so closely with your staff and made so many changes. We really want to come here, we want to be here, and we're committing that we're going to start immediately upon approval. There, in front of you is a timeline, I won't go over it, but we hope to be completed with this project by the first quarter of 2028. In reviewing the history of many past projects, particularly multifamily projects, we can't help but note and call to your attention that many have been approved, none have been built. We're here to tell you, we're here to build it, we're here to go forward. I'm not going to regale you. I have another four pages, Commissioner Barker, on the general plan, but I'm hoping you're convinced that we comply with the general plan. So if anybody wants more, I can give you my four-page presentation on how we comply with the general plan, but not seeing anybody particularly anxious to hear that, I'll move on and just lay the predicate: we comply with your general plan in every, every respect. A quote, just one from your general plan, and I have four of them here, that are basically something very analogous. "Currently, the city has less multifamily and single-family residential homes per capita than Queen Creek, Chandler, Gilbert, or Mesa." And again, that's right from your general plan. We're helping solve that problem with this project. Again, I would like to quote from GOAL 11.3. "In support of more housing variety, the land use element, including the two policies under GOAL 11.3, state, 'There is a need to provide high-density multifamily housing within the downtown area.'" That is exactly what we're doing. Your downtown plan also says the same thing. I'm just going to read the bottom two quotes there. "Policy: Encourage High Density Mixed-Use Development Within the Downtown Core." That's us. We're within the core, we're doing exactly what your downtown plan calls for. Again, on the bottom screen, to your left, my right, but anyway. "For any successful downtown mixed-use core to be successful, there must be adjacent residential rental and/or ownership that helps support the commercial activities." All right. Now, I do, I just covered five pages. All right. Sorry? Okay. I hate to say this, but I think my employee here is getting bored too. He just kicked me. All right. All right. So lastly, as all of you know, the council, your city council in November of last year adopted the concentrated downtown master plan. So here's another plan. We're completely consistent with it. I've got four quotes that say that, and won't bore you with them. Hope you'll accept my word for those. All right, finally, we're wrapping up here. You need to make seven findings to justify a CUP. You went through those with the previous case. Since they are not discussed in too much detail in the staff report, I'd like to just quickly, quickly, go through those seven requirements and indicate to you why we comply with all of them, okay? First, the ordinance specifically lists these seven findings, and we need to comply with them. The first is adequacy of roadways, off-street parking, and public facilities. I've gone through that perhaps ad nauseam, so I'm not going to do it again, but I think you will agree we meet that requirement. The next one is negative impacts from the emission of odor, dust, gas, noise, lighting, and so on. That's an easy one. We don't contribute to those things whatsoever. The third one is contribution to the deterioration of the neighborhood or the negative impact on neighborhood property values. There is a specific finding in your staff report that says we are compatible with the surrounding uses. I'll leave it at that. Then, we also need to conform to the general plan. You don't want to hear any more on that. We obviously do. And then there is the screening and buffering of uses. The property is surrounded with a perimeter fence and landscape buffer. In fact, all minimum building setbacks are exceeded with our case. Talk about buffering, we've done it. We exceed all setbacks. And then the unique nature of the property, use, and other development characteristics. We have a unique problem on this site because it's got a lot of drainage problems, there's a lot of drainage ways that come through. It reduces the amount of land we have to develop on. So that's something that we've taken into account and have sign-off on. So in conclusion, the staff is recommending approval. They would not make this recommendation if they didn't feel we satisfied all seven of the requirements. Okay, I'm going to quote one last thing from the staff, and then I will sit down and go get a drink of water.
You're not going to be able to sit down. I'm sure there's some questions coming.
Okay.
You've got some questions coming.
All right, good. I love questions. Fine. All right. I'd like to review the conclusion in your staff report. "After reviewing the project proposal, the conditions of the site and its alignment with the general plan goals and policies, staff supports the proposed conditional use permit. Given the project's central location within the downtown area, a multifamily development at this site would contribute to the density necessary to support both current and future commercial uses. Residential density in the downtown areas is particularly important as it creates a vibrant and active environment that helps sustain and attract businesses." Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
My client's asking me to sit down too, so I think it's time to quit.
You're going to stay there for a minute because I know there's some questions coming.
Happy to answer.
Who wants to start? Robin?
No. Here, I'll start.
You want to start?
I'll start. Can I start?
Go for it.
So my first question is, like, with the Plaza Road and then AJ, because like, right now, you can go down Superstition and use Plaza as a straightaway to get to the trail. So is this build going to take that away?
No, I don't think, I don't think we'll have...
Because I read something on that, that it was only going to be...
Yeah, we will have no effect on that whatsoever.
And then, I liked your little diagram with the Idaho Road.
Yeah.
With all your different colored arrows. No, yes, no, that's fine.
Okay.
But my question is, when you come out of, when you come out of there to cross the trail to get to Idaho, that could be congested sometimes. Like, are you going to put a light or something over there?
Yes. We do not, I don't think it would qualify for warrants for a light, but we've traveled it several times and come out and watched the traffic. We did it again today, and we don't think that will be a significant factor.
I know, I've sat there long enough trying to cross the trail to get to Idaho. And then what you're, like, so when you're talking about with the parking too, the existing 44 parking spots? Are, I'm just a little confused on that. Are you using those for your guest parking as well? Are you including those 44 spots?
We are not.
Okay.
We are not only not including those 44, we're not including the 45 that we're adding.
So the 45 you're adding is not for guest parking? That's for public, like anybody to park there?
No, it could, it could be for guest parking, but in our official calculation of the parking waiver, we did not use those 45 spaces.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
I'm done.
Commissioner Starr?
Yes, sir. I have an ethical question for you, sir.
Ethical? Ooh, that gets heavy.
Why did you attempt to lobby the commission prior to this meeting, which is a public
That's a very fair question. First of all, pardon me for, pardon my hubris, I guess. I've been doing this for over 47 years, and I lobby planning commissions whenever they'll talk to me. There is nothing, as long as you don't violate the open meeting law, there is nothing in the law that prohibits an applicant from lobbying either the city council or members of the planning commission, unless, in the few instances such as is the case with Pinell County, they have, the commission has adopted a policy of not allowing the lobbying. So there's nothing ethically wrong, and I submit, maybe you could postulate that question to your city attorney. I think he'll back what I'm saying.
Well, Joel, do we allow people to be registered lobbyists in the Apache Junction? Do we allow people, or we require people to register as lobbyists in the city of Apache
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The council did pass a code of conduct. Oh, 2018, 2019, I don't know. It started out as 12 pages, but it got whittled down to four, I think Vice Chair would remember that. The code of conduct does not prohibit the applicant contacting council members. Now, if they do, in my caution, and I do training every year to board and commissions and the council, and my, my attitude is, well, can you meet? Yes. It's really your decision to do that, but if you do meet, my recommendation is, don't talk to other commissioners about what was said, because then you start getting into a possibility of an open meeting law violation. And I'm not, and I'm not, and I'm not saying Mr. Gilbert would ever do that. Now, other developers, other attorneys absolutely try to do that, and they try to get the votes, but Mr. Gilbert, in my, I've known him for 28 years, I believe, I've never seen him do anything like that. So can you do it? Yes. Is it an ethical violation of the code of conduct? No, it is not. And the code of conduct does apply to mayor and council and boards and commissions.
Okay, sir. You are a registered lobbyist, correct? With the city of Phoenix?
I can't tell you. Oh, thank you. We are.
Okay. So I'm just going to make clear that you are a lobbyist.
Yep.
And you are representing the developer today, that's fine, it's purely legal.
Thank you.
Okay. You also, are you associated with the, your company with the company that's done the, what have you saw, the downtown development plan? Are, and you're both Costale-based companies. Are you, are you a referral or association with those two companies?
No, we are not. We're very, we work a lot with the Schwabach Company on some big projects. We're just doing a couple of big ones on the west side of the valley, but we are not associated with them.
What brought you to Apache Junction then?
This, by the way, is probably my fourth case out here, so I like Apache Junction. I like being here, and we were real excited when the Wolf Company decided to hire us to bring this case forward.
You've got a total of 50,000 units for the Wolf Company since 2020, and you have a $4 billion worth of discretionary capital. We have to add your, you're quite a large firm. Is there a question there? I bet you guys are probably going to be asking that.
Yes, well, I'm not sure you're asking me a question. I'm sorry, Commissioner Starr.
Okay. The, the question I have is, how can the people of Apache Junction, based on their income levels, afford to live in your project?
Okay, well, I may ask my client to come forward and help me answer that, but this is a very experienced, efficacious company, and they do their homework before they tie up a piece of property and design a complex, and if they...
You were involved in the Halogen project, correct?
Hallivan?
Halogen. It's on one of your projects, isn't it?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And you're on Zillow, you can look and see what your approximate rental, we're talking about a single-family studio apartment at 535 square feet, is listed at over $1,535. Of course, yours are, you're going to be larger than that. If you go larger than that, it's closer to $1,600 to $1,800.
Well, our anticipated rents for the one-bedroom, and this is, I'm just having to speculate on this because it'll change as the circum, as we go to pull building permits and the cost of labor and materials increases, but the unit price we're currently projecting for the one-bedroom is 1,300, I believe, and I think 1,800 for the, yeah, 1,300 for the one-bedroom, and for the two-bedroom, it'd be 1,800. We're very comfortable that that rental rate can be sustained here in Apache Junction, or we wouldn't have spent over a year and a half working on this project, trying to bring it to fruition, if we didn't know we could make it work.
Well, the mean income of a resident in Apache Junction is around $52,000 a year. And a formula of 30% of your, of the mean income being allocated to rental property, okay? Nobody in this particular area could basically afford it.
Well, you're talking about the mean income. There are people that make more or less.
45% of the people make less than that in this, in this area.
Well, I didn't do the preliminary work. Chase, do you want to comment on that? Give your name and address.
Yeah, Chase Kershein, 6710 Camelback Road. So good questions, Commissioner. So you said, remind me of the median, mean income in Apache Junction. It's 54,000?
52,290 dollars, something like that.
Okay, we'll use 53,000. So HUD uses a 30% income factor for rental, so if you go 53,000 times 30%, which is what's allocated to rent, that gives you $15,900 annually. If you divide that by 12, that's 1,325. So that, that person making that income could live in the one-bedroom unit. And it's a range of 1,300 on the low side up to 1,850, depending on the location of the unit. If there's a U premium, or if it's, um, harder to get to, it's, it's just a range of how the units are priced. Your, your comment on Halogen is a, is a good comment, thank you for, uh, doing some research on, on the company and, and other projects. That's a different location, so it would, each sub-market has different rent rates, right? That are driven by market. It would be like comparing a, a home in North Scottsdale to a home in South Phoenix, right? The, the values just are, are different in different locations.
Central, Halogen's in central Phoenix, right?
Halogen is central Phoenix, yes, but the, the rental rates are stronger in that location. Where we, the, the closest three-story apartment complex, um, to, to our property is actually in, in Mesa. Yeah, off Southern Road.
Okay. Uh, what would you, uh, could we, would we make, if we made a requirement that conditionally used that you accept section eight housing vouchers, would you be amenable to that?
Joel, can we even do that legally?
We, we would not, that's not what we build, that's not what we're proposing here. So, we would not be agreeable to that stipulation. Furthermore, I'm not sure it's a legal stipulation.
I didn't say it'd be a legal stipulation, I just said if you would agree to it.
We, we would not, we'd make no bones about that.
You do realize that section eight, it does not affect your bottom line, it only allows people with lower incomes in order to.
I am very familiar with section eight housing.
Commissioner Star, can we allow Joel to address whether it's even legal or not?
Sure, go ahead.
Commissioner, I believe there may be some challenges under the Federal Housing Act, state and federal. I would, I'd have to research it, but I believe that would be problematic if you imposed that as a condition.
Thank you, Joel. Go ahead, Commissioner Star. Do you have any more questions?
No, I don't have any more questions at this time, go ahead.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Barker.
You say that with such disgust.
I was hoping to get home by ten.
He saw my page.
I'm impressed.
Well, I, I promised I would come in here with an open mind, I want you to know that at the get-go. I, um, have walked that area for close to fifty years. I know it well. I have always loved that area, it is one of the few places that is right in town that you're actually kind of back to nature, and I have always enjoyed it. So, I come in with a little bit of a, oh darn, attitude towards this. Um, first of all, my understanding of the vision of the downtown from the get-go, and this has been years, I was on the council for years, and then here, was that it be walkable. Walkability is very important to me, and was important on the vision studies that were done for the downtown. And I have a problem with the, um, the driveway on North Apache Trail. That kind of takes away from that walkability. We have curvilinear sidewalks there, nice shade trees, um, we've got the park where lots of people will park downways and walk to get to that park, they walk their dogs up and down there. And now you wanna turn three hundred cars loose coming across that sidewalk where people walk. So that's one of my problems, okay? Walkability. So I feel like that traffic is a problem, even though you went through all seven, thank you very much, of those finders for facts, um, I do feel like there's a, a problem there. Also, just, and this is just a comment, I, as I was thinking about it earlier, I think that this you maintain is compatible with the area. I don't see it as compatible with the area. Um, everything around it, with the exception of the Health and Wellness Center, has a very low profile, and this has a, a very high profile, not just from the height. The height is, you're absolutely right, you've got far less height than you could have. I think it's the lines of that, the building are very intrusive in a desert area, to me. This is a personal thing, I'm sure. Other than that, this is a very nice project. I love the fact that you have a dog park, thank you very much. I am an insister on dog parks, I think they're very important. I just wish that all that congestion wouldn't be right there on North Apache Trail. And also, one other thing, you said some, someplace in your presentation, you made the comment of turning right on Plaza. Does that mean you're not allowing a left-hand turn? Coming out of the development?
No, he was saying that it's more like.
Not allowed, yeah. That's correct.
So you are going to allow a left-hand turn?
No, we are not.
No left-hand turn coming out on Plaza? Right, okay, so they, so your traffic coming out of this development with three hundred and some odd people is all going to go right to Superstition, which only has a stop sign and is very difficult to get across in the winter. Take it from me, I've done it a lot. That's gonna create some major problems. I realize, I went through your traffic study, it took me three hours today. I went through every single page of it, and I see your numbers, but I, I don't know. You combine the RV park and your community, if even a quarter of your community exits on Plaza, even less than that, you combine that with, with Lost Dutchman. I have sat behind people coming out of Lost Dutchman for twenty minutes, trying to get across there with great ease. I, I think that creates a problem on Superstition, I truly do. I, that's, that's my opinion.
Mister Chairman, Madam Commissioner, may I address that?
Oh, please do.
Okay.
Short.
All right.
Concise. Precise.
I will try.
I'm an English teacher.
I'm, I'm married to one. And my mother was one too.
See?
I'll try to condense this. The city, in its wisdom, has adopted a general plan. That general plan and zoning that the city has put on the property allows three uses.
Gotcha.
Retail, office, and multifamily. If you are truly worried about traffic, which of those three uses, and you've read our traffic report, produces the least amount of traffic? Multifamily. Our traffic report makes that very clear, and that's consistent with I T E standards. So if you're concerned about traffic, this project you should support. If another developer comes in and we go away, the other developer can come in and put all the retail he wants there, and that will generate almost eighty-five percent, or we're decreasing the traffic by eighty-five percent of what we go there, if it were retail, and forty-five percent if it were office.
Okay.
So if you really believe that there's too much traffic, you ought to be jumping up and down for this project.
So I, I have to take the lesser of three evils, is what you're saying?
The, no.
Correct?
I don't think, I don't think there, I don't agree that they're lesser of evils. Your city council has adopted a general plan, a downtown plan, and a concentrated downtown plan, and every single one of them says, put residential on this piece of property. So, if you're saying, I'm gonna junk those plans, I'm not gonna follow them at all, then maybe you ought to take that up with someone other than me, than I, nominative case, linking verb.
Absolutely. I, I think that my comment was not to rile you up, which I have done.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I have.
I'm a lover, not a fighter, I'm not riled up, believe me.
I think my comment was kind of food for thought. What can we do about that? What can you, as a developer or the lawyer for a developer, if, if this is gonna create traffic jams, how can we alleviate that? Not by having another type of development, et cetera, but what are the options? What ideas might you have that would help to alleviate that problem?
Well, I, I tried to outline those in my presentation, and I think.
No, you gave me the three possible things, a shopping center, an office, and a residential, and you gave me the traffic study, which I understand all of those things, and I see your points on all of those things, I truly do. And I'm asking a, a question from my real, honest concern that has nothing to do with whether I'm gonna vote for this or not, has to do with a concern. And that's it. And I was wondering if there was anything that you and the developer could come up with that would help alleviate this problem. That's it.
May I just preface my answer? You, you didn't rile me up, and I'm sorry if I conveyed that at all, I was, what riled me up was having to be short. Andy, make your point about Plaza Drive.
In support, ma'am, I would say, what we can do about the bus, school bus traffic, and the, uh, and the AM signs and all the food delivery people that are gonna be flying through that.
I'm, I'm just really interested in what.
Just traffic was something.
My name and address is the same as yours.
You have the same name?
Not the same name.
You already introduced me, Andy Jokums with Gilbert Blyley, seven oh one North Forty-fourth Street. Through the, through the Chair, Vice Chair, you, you talked about Plaza Drive just briefly on that right turn, and I wanted to, I put this slide up just to kinda, just kinda backtrack and show the context as we got. We've got the property, you can see it outlined on the screen. We have frontage on two streets and two streets only, Plaza Drive and Apache Trail. The issue with Plaza Drive is, as you continue south, you terminate into that private shopping center. And we were told by the city early on that we cannot contribute to traffic through that shopping center.
You don't wanna do that, no.
That's why that right, right-only exit is there, obviously, and.
Okay.
To go back to your question, in a perfect world, it'd be great if the city got together and found a way to get a roadway to continue Plaza Drive down through that shopping center. But right now, Plaza Drive as it exists is our only way out, and it does go only one direction.
So is this gonna widen Plaza at all? I know you're parking forty-five spots there, will Plaza be widened at all? Because it, it narrows down.
So Plaza Drive will be widened, it will still be one lane in each direction, but it will add the on-street parking, so you'll just continue the profile that you see to the north in front of Horizon Health.
Okay. Thank you, you, more or less, yeah, I gotcha. Thanks much.
Thank you.
I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah, how about that? Are you impressed?
Just nice and short. My question is probably to staff with respect to the parking and the eight-point-nine percent.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight-point-seven percent reduction. As you all know, we've gone through a lot of parking discussions over the last couple of years. Yeah, can, can you guys?
It's beginning your mind.
Sorry. Um, we've been through a lot of parking discussions over the last years and came up with a, a standard, and now we're backing off from it. Can you explain the rationale? From what I got from the, from the presentation, it's a component of the guest parking. Because there are so many units in here, our, our formula is overestimating the guest parking required. Is that fair? Why, why are we adjusting this or making a variance to the parking?
Commissioner Gage, that, that is correct. So the, uh, parking amendments that we have most recently made was to address guest parking. In the develop, past development proposals, those developments were a bit small. Um, and in fact, we had one on Plaza and Superstition, and that was a, uh, pretty spirited conversation about parking. This is a little bit different, and when that parking analysis that was submitted, part of that analysis gave us a comparison with other Valley cities. And when we were comparing numbers, we were a bit high. Uh, in fact, I think we are the highest parked. So the ratios were just a little bit high, and so the rationale was there to do that reduction. And there was a mechanism, zoning ordinance, to facilitate that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I remember our comparisons with other Valley cities, I didn't, I don't recall us being high, I thought we were somewhere in the middle. Perhaps in the future we could.
Commissioner Gage, the, we are high when it comes to the actual ratio count, when it comes to one bedrooms, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms. The guest number was, we were a bit low, we didn't have a guest number. And so just a little bit different.
In the, in the previous, prior to our?
Prior to our code change, that's right.
Gotcha. And so now, now with the code change, you feel we're a little high for these larger developments?
We are a little bit high when it comes to how we allocate parking associated to the number of bedrooms.
Okay. And you had said, you had provided a number that your existing, um, communities had like a one-point-nine.
One-point-six-seven.
One-point-six-seven, and this is a two-point?
Two-point-four, so we're providing way more than what we normally do.
Okay. Then the other one that I found in your presentation, we've been talking about forty-five off-site parking spaces?
Yes.
There's another spot in your report where it says it's fifty-three, so you might wanna fix that.
We will fix that immediately, my apologies, sorry.
What's that?
That's in the narrative.
Right there, yeah. So there's a, you know, a little typo.
Just a little bit.
There's a little typo.
We'll correct that immediately, I apologize, Commissioner Gage.
Yeah, the other, the other concern of mine was the Plaza Drive thing, and I think that's been answered, you're turning right and staying away from that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they did move the parking up, or the exit up.
Right.
So now it's not gonna be directly across from.
Right.
That should help some too.
Yeah. And I, as far as the general plan goes, I think, you know, with all of our designs for a developed downtown, this is what needs to go in. And I know you don't like it, 'cause you can't walk there, but.
No, you can't, sure does kill the walking.
Change sucks, hopefully for the future.
Sure does.
That's all I've got, Mister Attorney.
My question is just, uh, Wolf the Builder, is this all they do, are apartments? Or do they also do, uh, like residential for sale, or is it strictly just?
They specialize in multifamily.
So it was never like a thought, maybe we could put some, uh, single-family residential for-sale houses in here, or?
Single-family is not allowed in D three.
Yeah, it has been mixed. Multi, multi-family.
Say what?
Put a movie theater in there.
They could, if somebody wanted to, but we gotta get house tops first.
Yeah, unfortunate.
Anyone else have any questions?
Would, would condos be allowed as multiple-family housing?
They're multi.
Somebody, somebody could put condos in this particular, uh, location as well.
Yes.
Yes, but they would have to be multifamily condos.
That's okay. Well, the difference between a condo and an apartment, what's the difference?
You own it. Right.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm not being, uh, uh, facetious about this, I'm saying that the difference.
I, I can answer.
The difference is, is that a rental person, a person who rents an apartment, uh, is basically never gonna be able to own that apartment. is basically never gonna be able to own that apartment in their lifetime, okay? And what happens is that you retain all the appreciative value of the property as an investment portfolio. Is that correct?
We do, but.
We do. I understand the business.
You would wanna encourage that because when the developer of multifamily owns the project, he's much more motivated to keep it up, to maintain it, continue the quality, so he can continue to rent it.
Condo owners associations do the same thing.
They do. I agree with that, except.
The trouble is, the trouble, the difference, big difference between the two things, and this is one of my biggest objections because of the high amount of rental properties coming into this community, is that people will not have any savings account, so to speak. Okay? Equity. And they won't be able to turn a piece of property or appreciate it, take a loan against it, whatever we wanted to do. Okay? It's a dead-end renting, and everybody knows that.
May I?
You may address.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Star, first of all, I wouldn't call it a dead end. I lived in an apartment for many years after I got out of law school. That's all I could afford. So it isn't a dead-end proposition at all. And basically, it allows a certain segment of people to rent until they can move on, if they want to. Others wanna continue to rent even though they can afford it. And basically, your general plan says you don't have enough of it. Your general plan, and I quoted this specifically, says you need more multifamily. Your downtown plan says you need more multifamily. So every plan that has jurisdiction over the site is calling for multifamily.
I have a question for staff. How many major apartment complexes do we have in the city right now?
Major?
Yeah, not counting the little ten, twenty units. I would say anything over a hundred.
Couple of hundred units, maybe. There's the development at Royal Palm and Old West Highway. There's the Crossings, which is a low-income housing tax credit project. Couple of them are in the works. The Haven Lee is Sydney a hundred and sixteen.
That's not apartments.
Well, it, there's, they're built-to-rent units, bungalow style. Three-story apartments, we don't have any.
What about, I thought, I thought, is it, not Greasewood, there's another one. One of those, eighty-eight North on Idaho Junction, isn't that gonna be a three-story?
Those are condos. Those are two-story condos.
I thought, I thought on the map it said three stories.
No, they're two.
No, they're two. And.
But I'm talking apartments, so we have maybe less than a half a dozen.
Yes.
Probably closer to three. Major.
Well, the ones that are built versus the ones that are in the planning stages going through the entitlement.
Cause I'm not counting planning because we know what happens. How many have planned and then never come to fruition?
Yeah, probably the, the two largest projects is the one at, I think it's called Indian Summer at, at Old West Highway. And the other one is the Crossings, and I think they have maybe, maybe two-hundred units. Indian Summer condos and Mountain Vista condos on Delaware. Probably another two-hundred-and-fifty units down there. Those are also ownership units. Aside from that, we don't really have very, we don't have very many large apartment complexes. The other Sydney built-to-rent product is Southern Meridian, the Hamptons. That's also single-story. Yeah. Yeah, so not very many multi-story apartment developments.
And as staff, you would agree we probably need more apartment-style?
That seems to be what the market is showing.
And that's what our general plan is dictating as well, correct?
Yeah. This provides an additional housing choice for many, many residents. People who wanna perhaps move out of mobile home parks or are starting out in life with new jobs. Our demographics are changing, as we can see from what's happening down south. So this is just another, another choice in, in housing options.
And will this enhance what the city wants to do with the future commercial?
We believe that it will. We believe that it will spark commercial, possibly spark some redevelopment, and certainly be a plus to what we hope to see in, in the Triangle area.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for staff or the developers? All right, thank you. You're done. You get to go sit down finally.
Thank you.
Get this man a water.
Man a water, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can, before you open up the public hearing, can you take a five-minute break?
How about a ten-minute break?
That's even better.
We're gonna adjourn for ten minutes.
...
... We're gonna open it up, Blake. Remind everybody. Just one second, sir.
Okay.
I'm gonna remind everybody, please state their name and address. I'm gonna remind everybody, we're not allowed to answer any questions. So, you're gonna waste your time if you're asking us questions. And the same goes for everybody who spoke. We can't answer any questions during this. This is for statements. And you are limited to three minutes. We're gonna try and hold it to that.
We're gonna try to get the clock working, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
So, so the timer in front of you, when it turns yellow, that means you have one minute left.
Okay. All right. And with this, start us off. Thank you.
All right. My name is Leslie Stefan. I live at 400 Plaza Drive. I've, um, I spent most of my life in construction. Much of it in commercial construction, much of it in engineering. Now, I see several problems here, and I just wanted to point them out or reemphasize them. First one was the traffic. The, uh, the attorney mentioned that they have two little places where there's going to be some congestion. That's not two little places of congestion. Those are called bottlenecks that are already existing, and it's gonna become much worse later on. The construction, until 2028, I wanna know how they're gonna maintain the erosion going on with the wind around here, and how many lawsuits they're gonna be willing to face by the people from Lost Dutchman because of all the crap that's coming over the walls there. And you mentioned your diversification. Well, yeah, you're gonna be, your rent is gonna be $1,300, which is gonna be a very low rent. And we all know that there are some communities in our community that the illegal immigration, that one apartment is gonna house three families. That's just a potential. Okay? The, uh, the, uh, yeah, that was part of your shocking, you're solving the diversification plan. You're thinking you're, you are gonna be resolving a problem, which I submit that I think you're actually gonna be creating a bigger one. So, uh, these are just a few of the things that I wanted to bring forth for y'all to consider as I have had to deal with those things through my own career. I won't even take three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, just come up. You don't have to raise your hand. Just get ready to come up and come up when they're done. You can't ask questions. Oh. Three minutes per person.
Hi. My name is Liz Berhans. I am 400 North Plaza Drive. I've been there for four years. Some of my concerns are the rent in your area, like you were talking. For where I come from in Wisconsin, that's very high. Does that include your utilities, like your gas, sewer, water, garbage? What about the runoff of the water on the streets? We already get flooded in our park from water runoff on Plaza Drive. Another really big concern is the North Plaza Drive going out onto Superstition Mountain or to the drive, like Ms. Parker brought up. That's an accident waiting to happen every day. I've had to wait 20 minutes to get out. The people that live in the Lost Dutchman are older. What are you gonna do about that? You know, these are valid concerns for all of us. So, I hope y'all take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'll be short. My name is Brian Clark. I'm a winter resident of Lost Dutchman. And two big concerns of mine is where they're gonna come out on the North Plaza Drive, driving, right next to the postal trucks that come out. That's gonna create traffic right there. You're gonna have a lot of children. They could board in their little domain, wanna come out with their bicycles up and down North Plaza Drive. Really ups the potential for accidents right there. And the other concern was, I heard something about property values, that it won't affect property values. I bought my unit in the park, for the view. That was a big part of it. So, if that view is gone, my value's gonna drop substantially. So, the project sounds really good if it was being built somewhere else. Basically, that's about it. Like I said, give that gentleman my time. Anyway, thanks for yours.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Don Friday. I live at 400 North Plaza Drive, number 282. The reason I state that is I'm 275 feet. My name is Don Friday. I live at 400 North Plaza Drive, number 282, which is the second street in. And based on the GIS information, I live within 272 feet of the inside of the north building on Plaza Drive. Concerns I have are more from an infrastructure. So, these are gonna be addressed to either Katie, Derek, Chase. At the point, if project is approved, how are you going to handle the development of sewer increase, electrical increase, and water increase in availability during that construction phase? Where are those construction trucks gonna travel when they're bringing materials in or out? Where are they going to park on the development of the property? If there's enough children that start to live there, where's the school bus stops gonna be? How are you going to work with the owner of the Plaza Center? Which, yes, it is private property, but all of us who live here, and I live here year-round, know what it is like to go through that center anytime. For the city, we have wonderful events in Apache Junction where North Apache Trail is actually closed. We have parades on the trail. You can no longer close North Apache Trail if one of the major entrances and exits to a community of 336 units. That option goes away. And a phrase that I try to live by for a number of reasons, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. So, yes, you are meeting the standards of the developer as far as the amount of units that can be put in there. But for those of us who live here, people who live in apartments are here 24/7. Retail operations close, offices close. So, yes, the traffic flow is different, but people who live here go in and out all the time. The last thing I would like to address is the traffic study itself. Given the nature of the major construction on the trail between Ridding Road and Sausman, those of us who live here know you pretty much are not gonna go on the trail. You're gonna commute on either University, Superstition, or Broadway. So, if the study was done in September, not during snowbird season, not when a construction project wasn't going on, my question is, it's not a matter of if, but it has to have a signal light at North Plaza where it meets Superstition. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mara Summers. I live at 400 North Plaza Drive. I have lived in Arizona since the early 70s. I remember this area when there was virtually nothing out here. Runoff has always been a problem in Arizona. We have wonderful monsoons. We have heavy winter rains. Right now, we have a retention pond that is perfectly adequate for our community. And perhaps the retention ponds for that development are adequate. I would assume, I'm not an engineer, so I can't comment on that. But I will comment on, runoff comes off Superstition Drive, goes down Plaza. It comes off the medical building, all those parking lots, and then it goes through, um, our front gate. There's a, it's not through the gate itself. There's a culvert underneath there and comes into our retention pond. And so, we are handling all that water in a retention pond that was only meant for our park. I live on South, and I have videos of floods coming down there. And I have a pile of sandbags that I have to go out at 3:00 in the morning and put out. Now, you're offering to do another 45 parking places, which will increase that runoff into that area. That is part of, I believe, B of the seven things. It's not gas or anything, but it is increased runoff, which is very damaging. As far as adequate roads, we've gone on and on about that. But no matter, I really don't see where you would put a school bus drop-off. But one thing we have not considered is, could we get an easement from that site over to Idaho off of existing properties? And that would decrease, have two, but nothing on Plaza, have it go directly to Idaho. And maybe have a light there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. My name is Brenda Adams. I'm the manager at Lost Dutchman. And I'm probably speaking for most of the 1,400 to 1,500 people. They've already expressed their concerns to me daily. Very unhappy about the potential for blocking the view. The park has been there for 45 years, and almost everybody that's bought there has bought there because of the view. We do feel it impacts our property values. If you were talking one story or even two stories, it wouldn't be so bad. But three stories, you're gonna wipe out all of our views. There's no way that we'll ever be able to see that mountain again. And I have the best spot in the park, so I'm kinda partial to that. I have an obstructed view. The residents are very unhappy about that. We probably pay a significant sum of taxes to the city. We're 41 acres. I'm sure there's bigger. We pay a bunch bigger than they're gonna pay across the street. I have 1,400 residents that are taxpayers that continue to pay the taxes on their property, whether we call it property taxes, assessment taxes, or whatever. We don't believe it's in the best interest in the park to put up that high of a section of units. I know something's gonna happen there at some point, but 35 years, people have bought in that park because there was nothing there. One level we could deal with. Two levels mightn't be acceptable. Three is totally unacceptable. The impact for the traffic is gonna be significant. We already have a problem with that street. Right now, we don't have the number of residents we normally do. It's quieter coming up into the summer. When they did the traffic study, there's nobody here but regular residents. September's a terrible time to do it. They didn't do it properly when it should've been done, in January or February, when there is all of the traffic, traffic here. I think that's about it. Is there anything I'm missing? Kids. We are concerned about the kids and the possibility of them riding in the street, coming out that entrance. Even more importantly, the traffic that they want to have angled backing into Plaza Drive. Plaza Drive already is too skinny. We have all the, all the people that are coming to Hackers that are parking on our side of the street and across on the other side of the street currently, because they don't have adequate parking. And it's not acceptable to go through that hole down the street, turning right, because I like my car more than that. I don't wanna drive through those potholes. So, that's not an acceptable way for us to get out. If anything happens, we do need some kind of a traffic light there. We only have one way out of our park. That's right onto North Plaza Drive. So, we have to go out that way, and we do sit there a lot. It is gonna impact us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tim Cameron, resident of 400 North Plaza Drive for the winters. My concerns deal with bicycle safety. You're saying you're putting in units, people live there. Obviously, they're gonna be working, hopefully both of them, in each unit. But they're gone all day, so that view of that mountain sits there not being admired or loved. Our park, well, we worked our whole lives to come down and enjoy things like this. You'll see us out there taking pictures of the cougar. You'll see us out there taking pictures of sunrises and sunsets, because it means something to us. And as far as bicycle safety, we have people that bicycle from our park up to Prospector Park to go play pickleball and whatnot. And our road is narrower than a standard road. And without any kind of bicycle lanes, and we're gonna increase traffic, I appreciate the little arrow taking a right to go north, but we know it's just a painted thing on the road. And if we tear up that parking lot much more, they may just put a dirt pile at the end, and then it'll be a dead-end road. And the other thing was, I can bet you, a dime to a rolling donut, that there's gonna be a picture on a brochure that says, "Get an apartment with a view of Superstition Mountain," and they go to work for eight hours a day. And we get to look at the back of a building for the rest of the day. I yield my time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, councilmembers.
State your minimum ass.
My name is Paul Wild, so now you have to deal with the wild president. I reside at 400 North Plaza Drive. I am a full-time Arizona resident. I escape the cold of North Dakota and the hot humidity of South Texas to live here. And my buddy Tim was the guy that invited us down for a short visit. Third day here, we said, "We're gonna buy," because we love the community, we love the nature that we're dealing with, especially that mountain over there. Every time we leave the park, it's, "Hey, honey, there's our mountain." Coming home, it's a major landmark, because we're coming down Superstition Boulevard. It's one of the most important things to us, may not be to a developer who's gonna put in a bunch of units. Anyway, he's, in their narrative, they talked about diversifying the community by bringing in this thing, these multifamily units. And I understand that there's a need for that. And I understand that they wanna buy the property so they can enhance their revenue. And I understand that the city would probably love to have this for additional tax income. But there are some other things that need to be considered. The aesthetics of the community are extremely important to those of us who live here. We don't wanna lose that. The other thing is, and I'm gonna issue a couple of points for the attorney from the developer. He said that they would never have need for over 100 parking spaces for guests in that unit. Well, I would suggest that if you take one-third of those people hosting family get-togethers on either Christmas or Thanksgiving, that's over 100 cars right there. And if they have two people from the family coming to visit, they're gonna overshoot them drastically. The other thing about it is, if you come out of there, right turn only, unless you create a physical barrier, people are gonna come onto there and turn left and go right through parking lot that's down at the end of the street. And that's already a hazardous place to go through, because you have people backing in, backing out. It's just not a safe way to do it. And like Tim said, they'll, after they have to deal with the potholes that come from the extra traffic, they're gonna shut that lane off. You talk about the B3 zone and the ability to build the 60 feet. Councilmembers, you need to look at that. 60 feet, that's a six-story building. This is a three-story building. Oh, we're staying well within the limits, 38 feet. You need to look at that. You promote and support dark-skies policy, need to support and look at the feature of one-story buildings in the community in order to preserve the view. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna ask for five more seconds. I had an opportunity today to go over to City Hall, to the planning office, to get information about this meeting tonight and about this program. And this young lady sitting back here was one of the most helpful people, cheerful people to deal with, so, she deserves it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm the second part of the manager of Quail Run. That's my wife.
Oh, Quail Run, yeah. It's our old place. I'm Tim Adams. Live at 400. I came, when I first came to Apache Junction, you know what I noticed? No traffic. No traffic. My doctors are in Chandler. When we first started, we started down in Quail Run, down in Arizona City, for the, for the same people that own this place. And when we used to go to Chandler, it was a pretty good drive. It was nothing, no, no big deal, no big. Then they started putting all these apartment buildings in, and more apartment buildings, and more apartment. Every time we went there, two months, every two months, I'd see another array of apartment buildings. Traffic was incredibly bad. Here, we can't get out of Plaza Drive with the traffic that we have now. You add, what is it, 700 people to what we have, 1,500 people? And you gotta understand, as a 55 and over, it's really 70 and over. And they're gonna be backing out. When I saw the traffic parking along the street, they're diagonal. That means they're gonna be backing out. That means you're gonna have 70-year-olds and backing out people, teenagers. Not good. It's not a good place to be. I handled security at Quail Run. I, we were right in the middle of the neighborhood. So, I know kids, I know theft, I know accidents. And I almost saw a kid get killed at our site about a month ago, when one of the grandchildren were in. Kid came flying down the road, six years old, couldn't control the bike. Thank God he fell off, because there was a car coming right around the corner. Bike went under the car. Okay? You're gonna have a site here with, I don't know how many kids. There could be 200 kids. Don't tell me they're all gonna stay in the same spot. I've heard this story from him before. He's got 25 grandchildren. You can't corral kids. Kids go out with the bikes, that's it. And as far as taking a right onto Plaza, they're gonna take a left, they're gonna go to Hackers for breakfast. They're, they're not gonna just take a right. So, that's all I can say. Just keep Apache Junction a Apache Junction.
Thank you.
I'm Gordon Stock at 400 North Plaza. I'm Gordon Stock at 400 North Plaza. And I just would encourage you to do a traffic study there in like February or March, instead of September. And compare the two when you start looking at traffic counts and things like that. You gotta look at the peak of, the peak of the traffic and things. And the other thing is, you know, as a city, you've gotta look at the infrastructure that was alluded to. The sewer, electric, water in our park, the pressure is low during the winter season. And figure out these issues before you approve this conditional use and let them go ahead, or you'll be fixing it later. Another thing is the, the runoff, the impervious water there coming through and into our park there. I just foresee that as a much more major problem than really what it is right now. So, um... just foresee that as a much more major problem than really what it is right now. So think before you approve and consider what's ahead with the traffic issues and school bus stops, kids in the neighborhoods, bikes. And you talk about parking, and we have one parking spot per unit. We know what valuable parking is for people that come and visit because we get a lot of visitors there more than normal because people come to visit us during the winter season. And I don't know that the traffic for the up and down the road there, the parking spots that are going to be put in there, who is going to be allowed to park there for how long? Is there times that they could be there? And then if there is parking times that you have to be vacated from there, does it get to be a parking lot? And who does the enforcement of that stuff? So a lot of issues to think about. And I know it's a tough decision for you, but think it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Norris at 132 at Plaza Drive. And we have questions about water. There's no water set up across the street besides what we get flooded with. The water pumps that are out in front of our park, are they tapping into those to get water across the street? Because our water pressure is not good, and if they take our water away, what are we going to have? They also don't say, are they having sidewalks out there for the animals to be walked on? Our coyotes and our javelinas, where are they going to go? I only say that because you walk, and so do I. So anyway, water is a huge issue. Water, power, sewer, what are they tapping into to get that? Can you find out? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else going to speak?
Hello, my name is Mikey Grant. I'm a winter resident at 400 North Plaza, Unit 117. I'd just like to reiterate, I agree with what my other tenants and other fellow people have mentioned a lot, particularly traffic. And you know that, with that bottleneck showing out going to Idaho off of Apache and coming down Apache, it gets pretty busy even now. I think the thing that I would hope that the commissioners will think about a little bit is the fact that they're dealt an orphan child here. And these streets and stuff, the city may want and would like to, and I understand about having it developed, is more downtown. But there is a lot of issues there that really go along with this. And I thank you for your time, and I appreciate whatever the commissioner does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else going to speak? Going twice. Third time sold. And now close out the public section. So we've got to do fact-finding.
Directly, we can make our comments and kind of direct.
Who wants to do the fact-finding reading? You going to make Robin do it again? Robin, you've been...
Okay. Okay, finding of facts. Let me make sure I have them all here. Unfortunately, this was such a huge packet that it gets kind of hard to find the various components that it's made up of. Yes, I will speak up. I will even turn my mic up because I had turned it down so I would not interrupt any of you while you were talking. All right, one comment before I start this. Unfortunately, very, very sadly, you cannot buy a view. Those of us who have lived here for 50, 60 years have found that out the hard way. Just needed to tell you that. And the second thing I need to tell you is the city does not have a property tax. Your property tax goes to Pinnell County. It does not come to the city. Very important fact that you need to keep in mind. Okay, findings of facts, yes? I didn't quite get what that water runoff was. I got, one person said it was coming down Plaza.
Anything, it should help because under this development, water has to be maintained on property.
Right.
So if anything, hopefully it will alleviate some of those problems by keeping water on-site, and it won't dump into your guys' area, as it can runoff now wherever.
Should be an improvement.
I'm just saying, it's not going to, this development won't contribute to it.
Okay, finding of facts. Number one, is the roadway adequate off-street parking, public facilities, and services to a proposed use? I say no.
According to the studies and what the city is giving us, they say it is.
And I understand that, but I also agree with the fact that those studies were done at a time when there's hardly, those studies were done at a time when I can walk down the center of Apache Trail without worrying about getting hit. And that is not when we have traffic here. We have traffic in December and January.
Can we ask staff for clarification on the study and how it's approved and not?
Yeah. Yeah, I think...
Public works?
I think when they applied, I don't know the timing, but Cindy, you can answer that regarding when they're supposed to do a traffic study. I don't think...
Chair, Chair Commissioners, we don't have anything in our engineering standards that would demand a parking study to be done at a specific time of year or day. We have, there's traffic standards that are outlined in our engineering standards that they would have to meet. And so the city engineer has taken a look at the traffic study and deemed it sufficient and accurate.
Do they count in for the different times of year as well, usually when the city expert looks at this, or do they just...
Chair, they look at peak times, and then they do averages.
For the whole year, not just that one section?
Correct, that's right. Yeah.
Have you guys ever tried to reconcile or prove a traffic study that's been done? I mean, we've seen a lot of traffic studies over the years. Have they been verified, I guess is a better word? Does anybody do that, verify these existing estimates?
Commissioner Gage, the city engineer takes a look at them and makes sure that the numbers and figures are accurate and are conducive or make sense with the proposal that is noted in the packet.
So they are looked at after the fact?
Yes.
Just to verify that.
I can still disagree. Can I not? There's that funny fact.
You can, but the other members, as we go through it...
I drive on Plaza probably four times a week, and I deal with that because I live on the other side of Superstition in that neighborhood. And it is tough, especially year-round, you know, not like it was five years ago beyond, but even especially getting through the season, the nightmare. Sometimes it's three, four minutes here on Plaza. And same thing with the trail, obviously, you know? And that's a 15 mile an hour zone, which most people do not follow, unfortunately. But yeah, definitely the throwaway there is, in my opinion, is, for lack of a better term, it's sketchy, you know, getting in and out of there.
And then part of finding a fact deals with the utility drainage that's all in there?
Yes.
Which would kind of address some of the concerns, maybe. The city has invested... The city has invested in the Superstition basin to retain significant volumes of storm water to reduce flood runoff into the downtown area for the property applicant capturing bay flow through the subject site at approximately 107 CFs at the eastern property line and 27 CF at the northern property line. And that basin that we're talking about is the new one on the other side of Idaho there, I believe.
And this also addresses...
Basin on the east side of Idaho does not appear to impact the runoff on this property. I think that runoff goes down Idaho.
Yeah.
I think if anything might alleviate the runoff on this property, it would be the future retention basin that's going to be built in the northeast part of the city.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clarification because they mentioned that, so...
They are accommodating for all on-site with the flow that comes off-site. They're required to have retention basins retain what they displace. So all of the normal engineering requirements as far as runoff and retention will be applied.
Okay. And then it states in here, for utilities, gas, power, water, sewer, telecom, are all conveniently located in either Apache Trail or Plaza Drive. Applicants will need only to connect to these within the public right-of-way. At our property frontage, Apache Junction Sewer and Arizona Water Company have both confirmed capacity to serve this project.
Chairman, on Plaza Drive road improvements, is that, part of that's going to be funded by the city?
No.
It's written there. It sounds like the city's paying for it.
No, it's all by the builder. They do that. They're half of the project. And that's why this road is only half-done as it is.
So we have kind of a split decision on the first finding. Okay. Shall we move on to the second finding?
We will.
Negative impacts arising from the emission of odor, dust, gas, noise, lighting, vibration, smoke, heat, or glare?
Definitely less dust.
Pardon me?
Definitely less dust.
Yeah, I think it actually helps that situation rather than hinders it.
So we agree that is an improvement.
Number three, it contributes, does this contribute to the deterioration of the neighborhood or the negative impact on neighborhood property values? I don't believe it does.
No.
You cannot buy views, folks.
We can't protect public view.
Can't do that. Number four, is this compatible with surrounding uses and structures?
I think that's very subjective opinion.
Yeah, it's pretty subjective. Yeah, you're right.
But I think by the rules...
Okay, you guys, I got it. I got it.
It confirms with the master plan. There's three-story right next to it. Like they said, the cup's only needed for residential.
And it does conform with the general plan, and it does conform with city policies, as our visiting attorney has pointed out with such gusto.
He beat that horse. That horse has been beaten.
Yes, it has been beaten to death. Screening and buffering uses seem to be okay.
Yes.
At least you're not putting masonry walls all around it and creating an island. Thank you. Gosh, I hate all those walls. And last but not least, are there any unique natures to the property use or the developments, physical characteristic that need to be addressed? I don't think so.
No.
The site has multiple drainage ways conveying storm flows from the northeast, south, and passing through the site to a drainage outfall. The impact of the drainage conveyance reduces the buildable land area that might be utilized for surface parking. So it did its thing.
It should improve it.
It should improve it. And that's the seven findings of fact.
Anyone want to make any comments or anything?
Yeah, I want to make some comments. Obviously, this is a, we normally, excuse us if you can't always hear us, but most our meetings, there's zero people in the audience. So it's, does take some use to speaking like this so everybody can hear us because usually there's nobody here. So we apologize for that.
We can't address from the audience.
Yeah, we've got to keep some order here.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we need to keep some order.
So, yes, this is, people's lives are involved in this. People are stressed out, people are worried. Trust me, most of us know, Robin's lived here 50 years. I grew up here in AJ. We all see the changes happening. But we have to determine if this is the right change for this space. So this is a huge issue for us. For me, it's obviously a beautiful, it's a great development, but is it right for right here? Because that's one of the last prime spots, other than the triangle, where we're going to have commercial. Because over the last five years, we've pretty much done this process and given away all of our commercial. And so that's one of the big things I'm stuck on is the fact that, especially because I believe to the south over here in Idaho, behind Fries, that's all going to be probably apartments and some other single-family, right, multi-family housing. So we're going to have all that there. And I'm just worried that we're going to lose probably the last big chunk to have commercial realty on this side of town. You know, there's the south, at some point, there's going to be stuff there. But here in our main downtown area, obviously, we're going to have our unique little downtown spot here. But that's our last big chance at some real commercial. And then that worries me. Obviously, oh, right now, we have the chance to build, we have the chance to build. Well, that's what we've been doing, and we've given up all of our commercial. And the fact that we still have this nice prime piece here where we would be able to have commercial, I'm worried about getting rid of that and to get the rooftops here that we need, you know? And I also look at like the numbers with the rooftops being that we don't collect property taxes. The city, we get the 2.4% sales tax. So if you say, you know, they spend about $1,000 a month, or maybe $1,500 a month, we'll go high, in the city, a year, that's generating the city $145,000, $152,000, which seems like a good chunk. But with that many people there, we're going to need to hire probably two more police. That immediately wipes out what we're generating from their sales, from the sales revenue that they're spending in the city. And that doesn't also allocate the funds for any other city services that we as a city now are going to have to provide and pay for for the new residents. So it almost seems like unless they're all spending $5,000 a month in the city, that's contributing to tax revenue, it's going to have a negative impact on the financial aspect of the city. And that's just a different angle I'm looking at. And I'm a numbers guy, so I'm looking at it from there, especially as a city that where we just got the big kick to the face by the state taking away rental tax. So we're not making any money off this except for the 2.4% sales tax, which, you know, based off a little bit of math, it's not much for the city. So those are my two biggest concerns there.
Excellent point. I agree that there is not going to be that much revenue created by this particular development for the city. And most of those people will be going other places to the, into Mesa and Phoenix to do their shopping. And because that's where they're going to have to be working because we don't have industry or manufacturing here to support the population of professionals.
I'd like to comment. Yeah, I know it's one of our last big commercial areas, but I don't know if this really lets itself to a lot of commercial because there is no main artery directly abutting this other than... other than the Apache Trail slash Phelps. And I think short-term, it's going to be, it hurts us growing, but once we build out some of this stuff, I think it's going to highly encourage more walking in this area. So, I think long-term, it could be good. Short-term, I think it's going to hurt. And then if we did end up retail or whatever, what's traffic going to be like then? I mean, you're, all the studies, everything shows that it's going to be even worse, and it's going to put most of that traffic, because any kind of frontage you have is on Plaza, other than this little chunk right here, unless somebody buys all this and adds to it, which maybe, maybe not. I'm not a fortune teller. Looking at what we have, yes, I think it gets us to where we need to be in the future. Is it the perfect solution? I don't think so. I don't think any of what we do is perfect at any given time. You know, I wish we could protect people's views, but you know, we don't do that. That's not what we're here for. Do I 100% agree with this personally? No, but as for the city, I think it's good for the city in the long-term. And again, short-term, I think we're going to go through some pains and, but that's what we have to deal with, and that's what we have to base our decisions on, is this good for the city in the long-term growth? And with that, I'm done.
Anyone else would like to say anything before?
I don't know, we've talked a lot about the general plan, and you know, just some background. Every 10 years, city staff puts together a general plan, and they ask for input from all of us, everyone who lives here. And then it goes on the ballot, and we vote for it. So, the general plan's approved by the voters, and we have basically told the city that this future commercial area there on the map is where we want to develop our downtown. And in my opinion, in order for that, for to get a developer to put commercial construction, commercial development there, we need more rooftops. We've heard that from many developers that have come through here. In order for, to convince a developer to build commercial property down where the old, the old hotel used to be, you need more rooftops. Here they are. This is, when I, when I first read this, I was like, whoa, the general plan's coming together. So, I don't know. Yeah, nobody likes change, and nobody likes their view taken away, but at the same time, it's very difficult for me to tell somebody that owns a piece of property what he can and can't do with it, especially when he, and this particular design aligns with, with the current city zoning and the general plan. So, that's where I'm at with it. I wish we could, you know, get condos and allow residents to own their own properties, but the way the business community is now, that's just not really an option from what I've seen. I've been looking for condos myself, and they're hard to find. They don't make them anymore. You know, it's all rentals. So, you guys know how to make money, and you're doing it, right? Anyway, that's where I'm at.
Just going to say, concerned about the traffic. That's a big bugaboo for me. I don't know how you can change that. And coming out on Plaza and then the other side, flatiron, with all the events we have there, closing the road down, I don't know. Traffic is a big issue for me, and I don't, I don't know how that could be fixed.
A big issue for, a big issue for me is the fact that they're rental properties. And ownership is a very, very important thing for any couple or any individual, that they build equity and become owners. And owners are much more efficient and civic-minded people than people that are basically transitory in nature, that rental properties. And we are building way too much rental property here.
But this isn't even zone to be, single-family home.
I'm not talking about single-family, I'm talking about condos.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Say what? I do. I got to find it, it's in the front, I believe.
Make your motion, make your motion.
It's back in the front, I just got to flip to it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of conditional use permit case P-24-104-CUP. Requested by Gilbert Billy P. LLC on behalf of Wolf Enterprises 3 LLC for 336-unit, three-story leased residential community located at the northwest corner of North Apache Trail and Idaho Road, subject to the following conditions of approval, of which there are...
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
Eight conditions of approval.
I'll second it. Rudy, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Mike Land?
No.
Commissioner Callen?
No.
Sherman Hanchy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barker?
I heard such good discussion here concerning this, but I am overwhelmed with the problem of traffic, so I need to vote no.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Starr?
No.
Commissioner Bigelow?
No.
Five against, two in favor. The motion fails, Mr. Chairman. This case can also be appealed to the City Council within 20 days, filing fee reasons. Otherwise, if no one appeals within 20 days, your decision stands.
All right, there's no old business, no new business?
No, sir.
I don't have any news or information report. Rudy, do you have anything to report?
Not, not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do we have a motion to select the next meeting date?
Mr. Chairman, could I request some information from staff at a future meeting to...
Yes.
...review these, the parking calculation that we've approved, just why it didn't work this time, and then also an update on the traffic studies that we verify that those things are accurate. We get a lot of them, and it'd be nice to know if they're, how accurate they are. I mean, they're an estimate.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Barker?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission hold a regular meeting on April 22, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard. In the event there are no items to be brought forward to the commission, these meetings may be canceled. Notification of cancellation properly posted, and the commission notified by staff.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Rudy, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Bigelow?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Land?
Yes.
Commissioner Callen?
Yes.
Sherman Hanchy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Starr?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rudy. I now adjourn the meeting at 9:56.